Today is Wednesday, May 4th, 2016. It's 10 o'clock. I call the meeting in the Monongate County Commission to order. Let the record reflect that Commissioner Ed Hawkins and I, Eldon Callen, are present. Commissioner Tom Bloom is absent. He is representing us in DC with the Dutch Embassy. The work done on the Wickline project last year has led our county into national recognition. A lot of things this county commission has done, we are now getting international recognition as well. So, I want to thank Tom Bloom for representing Monongate County in this commission while this week.
Yes. Do you want to add anything?
Oh, no, no. I think it's a great, great thing that what Tom has achieved in this. It's really good for the county. It's going to make us all look, giving us national prominence, if you will. Plus, what you've been doing at the, at the level of your, your presentation that's upcoming.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you both.
Thank you. Would everyone please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag? Thank you. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Renetta.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have 17 exoneration listings for 5,495.71, fiduciary orders for May 4th, first quarter status report, and statement of services for fiduciary Commissioner Cynthia Ann Stafford. I believe there's probably that you might want to make a separate motion on.
Yes.
In the statement of services.
Yes.
And the first quarter report. We have minutes for the work session of March 25th, regular meeting and work session of March 30th, and then also for the election records book for March the 30th as well. General County vouchers, 155,675.72, Cole Severance, 4,001.9268, 911 Cash, 156,832.39, Chestnut Ridge Park, 2,0789.89, Camp Muffley, 2,001.4814, Tetris Valuation, 908.37, purchasing card vouchers, General County, 24,945.35, magistrate court, 4860, home confinement, 7,003.5706, Chestnut Ridge Park, 201.43, Camp Muffley, 366.57, Mason Dixon Park, 4860, accessory valuation, 151.38, for a total of 355,666.18.
The minutes are actually special session for March the 25th and just the regular meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, Janice.
March the 30th with the election records.
Okay. You agree with that correction, Renetta?
Yes, yes, she, yes. I'm sorry.
Good.
Move for approval.
I'll second. I have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Now, you had the billing on Cynthia Stafford.
Yes.
It was sent to us previously. We had to review it. What's the wish of the commission?
Okay, that was the...
Fiduciary commissioner.
Fiduciary.
Yes, sir.
I'm not finding that.
It's in our packet.
Yep.
Yes.
I'll second. I have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you. Thank you, Janice.
Okay. How about position vacancies for boards and authorities? Where are we at on that?
We have, this is the same positions, nothing new. One position on the development authority, one position on the historic landmarks commission, six on the Mon County Planning Commission. We have one position on the chief view PSD and one to expire on River Road PSD. We have had some interest in some of those, people that wish to be reappointed, and I don't know if you want to try and interview any of those, but we can go over those staff reports.
And I did receive, I did receive one email requesting an interview for development authority.
Okay.
So...
Okay.
With regard also, upcoming vacancy not yet, solid waste authority, Mr. McConnell is our appointment and he would like to be reappointed.
Okay.
So, I'm assuming that would be a July 1st.
I'll have to look at the...
Most likely.
Yeah.
Okay. Plus also, each of the parks.
Yes.
Interest to participate in, either Chestnut, Mason Dixon, or Camp Muffley.
And those will be five to seven members apiece?
Five to seven members apiece. We're starting from the ground up, so everyone's got a totally equal chance on these.
Okay. All right, we'll make sure we put those on our website as well.
Thank you.
Make sure we add those, yeah. Okay. Comments from the public. I opened the session for comments from the public. Do we have any comments from the public?
Are we going to have fiduciary?
Oh, did I miss something? Yes, I did.
It's okay.
I'm going to take it out of order since I already opened comments from the public.
Okay.
Okay, any comments from the public? During now, I'll close that session. Okay, yes, the fiduciary issue, which one, where is it?
It's right here.
It's, this is the, right, the, I'm sorry, the name is escaping me.
This is Dorothy McGee.
Dorothy McGee, thank you.
And there were objections by one, I believe, individual regarding...
Thank you. There was objection filed regarding final settlement estate of Dorothy E. McGee that was presented according to the clerk's office on Friday. There's also a response from Brent Van Dyson, who I guess is attorney for the executor trust. Is anyone present here on the Dorothy E. McGee estate?
I'm from Brent Van Dyson's office, and this is Pat Manning, the executor trust.
Yes, okay, very good. In your name, we need it for the record.
Nancy Lynn.
Nancy Lynn, okay. Is, is anyone here representing the person who filed the objection? Okay, that's, I was told by the clerk's office just before this meeting that the, the individual was told on Friday that this would come up this week and should, she should, should be here. I'm not sure whether she's physically able. Do you know anything about her, ma'am?
I do not know her.
She's, she works, so she's, I mean, she's able. I've only met her through eyes in 50-some years, but I do know that she gets out.
Okay. So, it isn't like she's on a disability that she couldn't come here?
Not with on the way out.
Disability arrangements?
Not with on the way out.
Okay. Basically, I understand the objection to be...
Four items.
They have four items that apparently were not found within the estate property that were bequest, bequest in the testatrix's will. I read Mr. Van Dyson's response. Just for the record, would, would you mind just sort of briefly outlining what, the objection is, these, this is, this is my understanding, so she's not here, but I still try to be fair with, with, with the letter that she, the objection she filed. The objection is that if it was not found, it was probably stolen or lost, and therefore there should have been a filing with the insurance company, which I know the, there's a legal obligation, you just can't say, whoops. When you sign, file a claim, you swear or attest that facts are true when you're filing that claim, and I understand the executor trusts may not be able to make that. But just, that was her claim, that either the property needs to be turned over to her or insurance proceeds for the value of the property should be turned over to her. What is the response for your client, from your client? I just want, I just want...
Yes, I won't do that.
I just want you to, to sort of reiterate for the record.
Do you want me to do that or the executor trust?
Either, either is fine. Which one's more comfortable doing it?
As far as the bleak china, that's not a set of dishes to my, from what I was told. It's just little knickknacks, which I don't recall ever seeing at Mrs. McGee's house. The, the ring that was supposed to have gone to her, Dot had dementia, which she, that's why she ended up in the rest home. When I went there one day and found her bill for the insurance, when I went through, listed all of this jewelry. So, I asked Dot if she still had all that jewelry, and she said she didn't know. So, when we looked, there, only the expensive jewelry that she had on her body was all that we could find. So, I called the attorney's office and asked him, should I continue leaving, paying the insurance with like $38,000 worth of jewelry? And he said no, to go ahead and cancel the insurance on it, which I did. And so, he wrote a letter to the insurance company saying that it could not be located, therefore the insurance was canceled. And that was in 2012 or 2000, first of 2013. The other, the bleak, I have no idea what it was. I don't recall ever seeing it.
The, did you have any reason to suspect that anything was stolen or...
I don't know. I wouldn't say that because I don't know, but until she required 24-hour care, Mrs. McGee was a very loving person. Anyone that came in, she had to have candy or something to give them. No one came to Dot's house without getting a gift of some kind, and that's just the way she was. I don't know. I wouldn't say it was stolen because I don't know.
Okay. But, but it's more based on your, your understanding of the reputation of the Miss McGee, that it's very likely that she gave a lot of it away?
Oh, it's because she gave things away. Like I say, anyone that came to her house left with a gift, even if it was a candy bar, they always left with something.
That's nice. I'm sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
The situation here, of course, is whether we accept the final settlement as presented with the objections. We have, we have different options. For number one, one, we can accept the final settlement as is, and so advise that, and just to clarify on the legal aspects of this, that, oh, anyone that, the will has no power in effect until a person's demise. Once that person has passed on, then it has effect. Specific request in a will is assuming that the property, does not bind the property or prevent the person, the testatrix in this case, from alienating that property. They can sell it, they can give it away. I see many wills that say, so-and-so gets my car. I've had that as a magistrate court, court case following the closing of an estate. Person had, the will said, so-and-so gets my car. Well, the question was, was it the car that was written at the time that the will was written, 10 years previously, that is now sitting in the backyard, it needs an engine, or the new car she bought? I had that case over in magistrate court. Well, those, those kind of things always come up. That's why writing a will sometimes creates as many problems, but I urge everyone to write a will. But, but when you give a specific request, the law states specifically that the fact you named it in a will does not prevent you from alienating that property any way you want to, through giving it away, through selling it, whatever. And only that stuff that is, that property that is left at the time of the demise is subject to the estate and subject to the specific request, and the specific request, if it does not exist, is nullified under the law. There's numerous court decisions on that basis. This does not, however, prevent, is it Miss Marks? Is that, what?
Mrs. Manning.
Manning. No, no, yeah, Miss Manning, she's the one that's filed the objections?
No, I'm sorry, that is Deborah Marks.
Yeah, yeah. Miss, Miss Marks, that, even if we, even if we approve the final settlement as submitted, does not prevent her from filing either in the magistrate court, depending on the value, and/or the circuit court, or any sort of claim she wants to make. So, this does not foreclose her from doing that, and I think any further issues on that would, would properly belong in those two courts. I don't see that it would be wise to cause further expense to the estate by referring it to fiduciary commissioner, because the estate property would have to pay for that fiduciary commissioner. That's my gut reaction. Commissioner Hawkins, what's your thoughts?
I generally don't know the individuals that are before us, but I knew Dot very well, as well as Tom, and I would say that she would say, please close this, and I would move that we accept as it is proposed here and close the estate of Dot McGee.
I'll second that. I have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you very much.
She was a very giving person. She really was.
No, but...
Most of the time, I, I don't know the, the individuals, but in this case...
Well, that's, that's, like I say, that doesn't foreclose Miss Marks from proceeding in another form, but here we're complete. Okay, do we have any introduction to new employees?
Yes.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Kat with Chestnut Ridge Park. I have three employees to introduce. Ms. Susan Judy is my new office staff. Ms. Joanne Musler is my new cleaning staff, and Mr. Nate Sign is one of my new lifeguards. Two started this week, and he will start when the water is warm enough, which will hopefully be by midday.
What, what? He mean, next week wasn't warm enough? Little bit of rain? Oh, come on, he's young and healthy.
If the water is not warm enough, I don't shoot for Memorial Day.
I'm sorry, I was talking, would you say that again? I'm sorry to talk over you.
His start dates will either be May 15th, or should the lake not be warm enough, we will shoot for Memorial Day. We would like to have the water open by midday.
Move to welcome them into our employment.
I second. I have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Those fish over by the water.
How did you find a male lifeguard?
That's great.
Kat, how did you find a male lifeguard?
You applied.
Excellent.
Excellent.
Enterprising young man.
Good to have you. Thank you. Colleen Kuhn.
Hi.
Hello, Colleen.
I have two grant applications for MAYSP. One is for the West Virginia Disproportionate Minority Contact Initiative. They're requesting $65,713 for that. Here's the application, the memorandum of understanding and special conditions and insurances for that. And then the second grant they are applying for is the gender-specific services grant. They're requesting $28,999.
Move for approval.
I'll mo, I'll second that. I have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. All right, do we have any correspondence?
Just one. About six weeks ago, you all spoke with Frontier regarding the installation of the phone system at the extension office?
Yes.
Okay. At that time, we signed a, an agreement to have the installation of the equipment. Well, because we are doing a lease for the equipment, the leasing authority, which is Tamco Capital Corporation that works for Frontier, they have asked for a modification agreement to their, to the, to our current lease, to increase it to include the equipment that we ordered for the extension office. So, there's asking for a signature from the commission on that.
I'm confused.
Okay.
Why, why do they need a modification?
Because we had already agreed on a certain amount for the courthouse, the sheriff's office, and the Justice Center.
You're now including the extension office.
Because we added...
Okay, so rather than have a separate independent, the extension office is another prime example where the legislature passes statutes, force us to fund them.
Right.
We had no choice but to fund them. And so, so this, this is part of our funding that's providing the phone.
Correct.
So, they want a modification of the existing rather than having a second date.
Separate, exactly.
That makes sense to me.
Move to allow the president to sign the agreement.
I'll second. I have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other than that, I have none.
No other correspondence?
No.
Any unfinished business?
No, sir.
Any new business?
Yes. I have two items. Mylan Park has requested that a county commissioner be placed upon their board, and I would like to nominate President Callen to represent the commission on the Mylan Park Board. That is a motion.
I'll second that. I have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you.
Pursuant to what we had passed and had mentioned earlier, two weeks ago, it will be necessary to rewrite the bylaws to reflect the motion of two weeks ago regarding limited management as well as the junior boards. So, I would like to work with Renetta, if it's okay with you, and have a go at these three bylaws to be presented to commission for final approval.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
It's administrative decision, and that's, that's fine with me. I'll be good.
Okay.
I know, I know it takes a lot of work, so...
Well, we have a, we have something that's...
You got a structure to start with.
Yes, we have a structure that just needs to be modified more than anything else.
Okay, good.
Yes, that's all that I have under that.
Any further new business?
I have nothing.
Okay. I want to recognize Pam Kraschinsky. Nice to have you here with Attorney General Pat Morrissey's office. Glad you, glad you could come. Is there anything you'd like to say, or...
No, just here visiting.
Wisdoms from, wisdoms from the AG that we want to pass on?
No, no wisdoms. Just, you know, you see all of our press releases in the paper and, and on the news. He's a very busy man. Our office is very, very busy, so that's it. We just like to keep up with our county commissions and know what's going on in our counties, and I have a lovin' of them, and I have them all scheduled this month.
Well, we appreciate you coming, and we appreciate your service.
Thank you.
You are, you are such a valuable resource to Monongate County and long have been and look for many years more out of you. Tell Charlie I said aye.
I'll do that.
Okay, do we have any other elected officials present? Okay, reports from county commissioners.
First of all, is, is Mr. Doyle, did he step up? I'd, I'd like for him to give the first report. We've been having work done at the, at the parks currently.
He stepped down.
Oh, we did remodel Camp Muffley's residence house, and we'll let him, if he does come back, I'll let him give the report. If not today, then the next meeting on what's been, what's been achieved out at, out at Camp Muffley. So, all right, first of all, may the fourth be with you. The geeks will get it. Attended the Solid Waste Authority meeting. They have some initiatives for proposals and legislation for next year. Of course, we'll have to see who our elected officials are going to be, but I did speak with Delegate Fleischhauer and Delegate Stafford, oh, there's probably, and they will be able to discuss this in the fall elections. Mr. Doyle, if you would care to give a report on what is transpiring out at the Camp Muffley and the repairs that are going on.
Yeah, we're almost completed out there. Construction crew and Carlos have been out there. We've redone the whole house for the caretaker upstairs and downstairs. So, we built another bathroom there for them. We also redid the basement of Mon Cabin. There was moisture in it, so we cleaned it all up, dried it out, some commercial dehumidifiers in there, painted it all. Then we're going to do a pavilion down there. I don't know which pavilion it's called. It's been hit by a car, so we're going to put a new roof on it and fix it up.
So, it's on, it's on the other side of the creek?
No.
It took on a little water, but it'll make it work.
I'll, I'll give a little bit of report, but it, it, it's, it's, it's fine. It didn't, it, none the worse for wear, but very, very proud of the work that's been done. If you recall, this is money that was left in a treasury.
Yeah, gifts, yeah.
Yes, you know, and...
Tremendous work.
We really, we really thank the county commission workforce for the care that's been taken, and it, I've, I've looked at it several times. It's absolutely spectacular, so really, really great. On the 23rd, Judge Clodges and I did represent Monongate County at the Institute of Architects. That's the 2000 Design Gala Award, and this is the Charleston paper, no offense, Ben, but the headlines and the picture of, of the courthouse, and it was really the top award winner. There were three separate sections that were granted awards of the top line, but it really was the headliner as what was done for the new Justice Center in Monongate County. So, again, you're to be congratulated for overseeing such a project that, and I'm sorry, I know you had other commitments that you weren't able to attend, but again, Judge Clodges and I had a good time at the gala. Camp Muffley did have a flooding issue a week ago. We had a cleanup day last Sunday, brought out a really good crowd of volunteers that worked and cleaned the place up. I wielded a pressure washer, and if you've ever ran a pressure washer inside a closed confinement, because the pavilion was very easy because it's open, but when you take it into a bathroom, I assure you, I was muddy when I came back out. So, but really, what was really heartening was that it were, these were people that I didn't know for the most part that came out to volunteer. So, I always talk about the usual suspects. The process here, I always, I, I wait till Tuesday. I, I'll explain briefly why, because my grandfather believed heartily in the vote. He was one of those who would drive people to and from the polling place. He didn't care about party, he did care about voting. And for me, this is something that, sort of like Christmas, I, I look forward to going to my polling place and voting. I would hope that all of you would be encouraged to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. I just want to add my praise of our, our facilities and maintenance department. Would please pass that on to your other people. I know you do. You do a tremendous job. You save the, you and your crew has saved the taxpayers millions of dollars over the last five years that I've been here, and before, but it's just tremendous work, so please pass that on. I would also echo the same settlement. Early voting is a convenience. I guess if I was, uh, I guess if I was gonna be absent or something, I would early vote rather than absentee vote. But I too always vote on Tuesday because it's the way my family did it. It was a family affair.
Yes.
When I was, I was one of eight kids, and my parents would load up all the kids in my dad's 1957 Ford Fairlane, and drive to the polling place, which happened to be at Brown's Chapel at that time.
Ours was Easton School.
And they would, they would discuss, they'd never tell each other who they voted for. That was, that was sort of a deal between the two of them. But, but they discussed the events, the public events before that, but also especially on the trip before, to and the trip home, and they always involved us kids in that discussion. So we'd sit in the car while they'd go in and vote, and sometimes if we were especially good kids, Dad would give us each box of Cracker Jacks to eat while we waited on them. But. So it was a family affair, and I continued that with my own kids. Whenever I went to vote, I, I took my, took my kids with me when they were young. I took them even after they're older, and actually, I still do that if I can, if I can, of course, they're grown now, they're in their twenties, and they've got families of their own and all, but, but we'll call each other all day. Did you go vote today? Did you go vote? Were you coming over? And we will wait and go together. So I still vote on Tuesday, although I think early voting is a, a convenience and encourage people that if for some reason they can't be there on Tuesday, to please early vote. You got till Saturday to, to early vote, and there's three convenient locations.
That's right.
Seven o'clock Saturday, the 7th.
7:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
On May 7th, yeah. So that's all I have. The, Renetta, do you have anything further?
Yes.
Move to adjourn.
I'll second that. I have a motion and second all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you.[1190.66]